So.
And we are recording.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Stephanie, thank you for being here. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I don't want to miss anybody else joining us, so. Just kind of getting right into it, you know, obviously, we. As a recap from last meeting, we can't, we voted unanimously to cancel the conference. I think we've done everything that we needed to do to reach out to. Everybody that we had scheduled. To cancel, Ryan, I don't know if you've reached out to or needed to, do we need to reach out to? Anybody just let them know, you know, we're not continuing planning for like the Orpheum or any of that stuff.
Food trucks. I'll, I'll reach out again. I still haven't heard back from the food truck guys. I did let the merchandise guys know though.
So, like I said, I think, and I believe Shannon had reached out to both keynote speakers. We just moved their dates, their deposits are still good. We've canceled little America, so everything, you know, as far as I know is on the. I don't think there's anything lingering other than. The, I guess, return of payments to those that have registered.
Correct. I think we should put out one more big. Reminder for everyone to cancel their hotel rooms.
Sure.
Okay.
I don't know how many there have been reserved, but we may just want to remind them one more time. And I don't know if Susan would be able to tell us how many are still reserved.
Yeah, they, she actually said that we could, they could cancel them for us. I guess my only hesitation in that was. What if somebody wanted to just keep their reservation and go up there to vacation, right? Because they already have it on the books, so I didn't want to do something that. You know, caused problems.
Right, good idea. I think just go to re, the remind like you just stated, do the remind for the hotels on the, on the emails and website again. And, and hopefully everybody's on ball. I, I've had some feedback from people just straight to me and it. You know, everybody sounds like they're following plan. They know it's canceled. Cancel their hotels. Everything's on board, so I think we're good there.
I've had a couple of vendors reach out to me. They're interested if we're going to go ahead and go virtual. And if we do, they would be interested in doing like a 30 minute little class or presentation as well, so. I told them it was something we would be talking about later in the week.
I'd say maybe, so on the topic before we get to. That, that maybe we just table it, but if we're going to potentially have the opportunity to do like two days worth of virtual conference, could we do like class and content on one day, on the first day, and then like a vendor, virtual vendor show on the second day? And give them all an opportunity to have different times that they can come on and, you know. Do a 30 minute presentation or, I guess, you know, still have that face, that valuable FaceTime.
I don't know if that's a bad idea.
You want to chime in there?
It's not a bad idea at all.
I think vendors would enjoy it depending upon. How many vendors participate, you'd probably have to keep it to. Short 15 minutes or so, I'm assuming, right?
Right.
I think a lot of, if we just set out a timeframe, you know, we're going to do two hours of this, and then how many want to do it? Then we'd be able to divide the time up evenly.
Yeah.
And some breaks in there, so it doesn't go boom, 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 you know, 10, 15 minutes, five minute break, 10, 15 minutes, five minute break, yeah.
Vendors can be a little boring, you know?
I'm sorry.
If you're not doing cornhole or blackjack, so it will get it.
So, Tom, I lost interest. What'd you say? I'm sorry, no.
Yes, I got to figure out how to do a virtual cornhole tournament.
Yeah.
For the Monday evening yet, I don't know, something.
Yeah, since Stephanie's in here. Just wanted to, you know, see if we could get some of those questions answered about. What we could potentially maybe do as far as a partnership with the trust. In, you know, obviously, we have some content that we want to provide. And we only have, I think, access right now to Tommy's. I'm sorry.
Zoom.
Account, correct. And so we're, we're talking about, you know, purchasing our own for TAA, but. Wanting to know if there's possibility of partner with the trust accounts and. You know, maybe if Steph, if you can give us a little bit of feedback about just what your experience has been with the training. That you guys and your team provided over the last few months and, you know, kind of some, walk us through some things that maybe you encountered. You know, that might help us out in planning a, what a virtual conference might look like.
Um, sure. I would have to say that our month of April D S refresher training was successful because we had. 13,000 people.
Thousand.
So.
Awesome.
Yeah, I, I would say number one, due to the fact that we have a large, older group of. Folks who don't know how to use their, their devices, their tablets, their, they panic when you throw something electronic. That's new at them. Make it really clear first and foremost that they don't have to. Create a new account, a new Zoom or a new, you know, whatever, whether you're using Google platforms or whatever it is you're going to use. Make it clear to the folks that all they have to do is click on a link and they get to participate. That was, that was something we fielded early on from a particular set of folks who, you know, were anti. Electronics that they didn't want a new app or they didn't want to have to sign up for something new. I, I would say number one, convey to your audience that they don't have to do anything. They just have to click on a link and they get to participate.
Yeah, and they don't need a camera. Or a microphone to do any of this, because this side would do all the presenting, they would still be able to click and watch and hear everything.
They don't know that. They.
Yeah.
I, we had people who say, well, I, I cleaned my room so that, you know, what you saw was clean and I took a shower and did my hair for the first time in three weeks. And it's because they, it's because they don't know. They, they hear of it as a virtual online, oh my gosh, I'm going to see everybody. Maybe sort of like this. So I guess spell out what it's going to look like for folks and, and make it as easy as possible for them to want to. Oh, sure, all I have to do is click and watch. Okay, great.
And Steph, when you did yours, you just did share screen, didn't you? You didn't, yeah, you just did share screen. You didn't, I mean, the speaker can have the camera on and we can turn all participant cameras off. But you just did share screen, so we were only looking at your screens that you were presenting, so I mean that's.
And honestly, we had a lot of people ask. For us to see us, but the. Two girls weren't really interested. It wouldn't bother me, but, but they weren't interested, so you can do it any way you want. And then at the same time, when you're sharing, you're not just sharing. Say a presentation, you can share at the same time, go on to the internet and they, and your audience goes on the journey with you. So, so say, Tom, you want to show a, a new bus that you've got or some new features on a bus, you know, during your presentation. You can actually walk them through on your website where to find the material, how to order that sort of stuff. So, so whatever is going to be on your screen that you want to show them, the audience goes with you. It's, it's not hard at all.
We were sharing videos. We were, I just shared my screen on another browser and played a video the whole time for a lot of our guys. So they could watch the video as well. So, I mean, there's plenty of options for presenters. But yeah, I, I agree with you on getting a communication out that they don't need anything, just a computer. And speakers that they can hear us and that's it. Yeah.
Sure, and then, and then I would say the easiest way to approach it for folks who, you know, want to be a presenter, but haven't done. Done the online platform before. Explain that it's just like teaching in person, only you're going to be using. The computer to forward your presentation or to facilitate a discussion. If you are going to have three, say at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday morning, I don't know what dates you guys are thinking. But at 10 o'clock on a Tuesday morning of your virtual conference, you may have two classes going. Well, instead of walking into one of the classrooms, these folks will just register to be able to hook into one of the classrooms. So when you think of it that way, you can set up as many classes per hour as you want. You're limited by how many. Zoom accounts you have.
And Tommy, we have registration capabilities, I guess, through the account that you have currently or. Would, is that like a pro feature of Zoom that we would look at if we're purchasing the Zoom platform?
The, the registration form is if we chose the webinar version of the Zoom, which I don't have in my account. The only way people can get in is creating the meeting, so if I want to do three meetings at the same time, I don't know if I could do that. I would have to look.
No.
You can't.
Because it's on your network, you can do one at a time, so.
Okay.
Well, think of it as whatever account you have, you can do one thing on it. And meetings will suffice. You don't have to have.
The webinar.
Talking about, if you're just going to have a group discussion like this, say Ryan's going to teach. You know, the ABCs of. Student management and he doesn't have, say, Ryan, you don't have a presentation, you're just going to sit and talk about it like we're doing here. You don't need webinar for that. A meeting, just like we're doing, will work.
So Jason, what we could do is just create what timing and what we want to teach. I will create the meetings for those times. And then we just send out the invitation with that link. And that password for that meeting. We're just going to need like 15, 20 minutes in between each meeting so we can get people in to each meeting.
Yeah, and that's when, if you want, I can. Bring up the agenda again that we can look at, just kind of what I had pinned together. But my thought was, you know, for, obviously, you know, it sounds like we're going to get some news here in the next couple of days about what. You know, what's going to, next year's going to look like, so. There's going to be a lot of people that I think want to talk, just talk in general about what. What they're planning, whatnot, and so it doesn't necessarily need to be, I think it would be nice to just have a. Guided PowerPoint that just says, you know, slide by slide, and we just kind of keep them on topic like we kind of talked about before. I'm just pulling up this, so let's see here.
While you're pulling that up, I do want you to consider, because if you remember at the beginning of April when we started our online classes. Zoom was in the media for security issues.
Correct.
And so our IT person spelled out the guidelines needed to avoid. For those folks who were worried about security issues, the first and foremost, the thing that you can do to help avoid that. Is make sure that everybody has to register and that they have to use a password. Sure, you, you are going to promote this as being open to whoever joins. You can't stop people from joining. So what you do have to do is create, Tommy, you, you will probably have to do the hard work if I'm hearing you properly. You'll have to have a registration and a, a password for every class that you create. And then minimize screen sharing or remote sharing as much as possible, because.
Yeah.
That, the remote sharing. Is an open door for a security issue.
Yeah.
Those three things in mind, register, password and, and don't screen share as much as, as you possibly, you know, can avoid. Those are the main things and we, we have used Zoom for two years and not had one issue.
Yeah, we, I could create a Google signup like for each class that they want to do, so then only those people that signed up would get the password for it. And then when you start the class, yeah, you don't allow the participants to share their screen. You don't allow participants to chat amongst each other. It just stays to the host and we, yeah, we could do that and set those security parameters up. So only the ones that register for that class are getting that password. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, like I said, my thought, like if we were to run this ideal, or this, this survey here, or not survey, but the agenda. You know, we do a let's talk for administrators or maybe a let's talk for trainers and whatnot, and so. That way it's more kind of focused around. Their job titles and kind of keep everybody in their own, you know, mechanics and the fleet staff, what are you guys doing to prepare? I'm sure there's a lot that they're probably not even being brought up. There's so many unknowns right now that. I think that everybody kind of has their own idea of. What should be and what shouldn't be, and it just gives an opportunity to just foster. Organic conversations, if you will. And then from there, we just, you know, take a, a break for lunch and you can see I've got 15, kind of 15 minutes in between built in each. Timeframe. Except for, well, I could spread it out even more. I did, I think I did 10 minutes or something like that, so we need to just fix the times, but. We just stretch it out so that way. We could do that, and then it's really just reaching out to those that we kind of already had slated. To present, and if they want, if they don't want to, then we change it up, do something a little different, I think. And, I mean, you know, I would, I would imagine Brent from NBC, your NBC would still be willing to. You know, do one for us. Josh, you're still in here. You know, if you wanted to do something on student reunification, we could probably reach out to Nancy Deleke. I'm sure she would still be willing to help out for. The DSC top thing, we could probably do, you know, that's probably good in itself because there's so much of it that is online. That we could work with her and she could, you know, just kind of poke around and show us what. The dashboard looks like, and there's so many school districts that aren't even using their platform yet, and they're still doing things by paper, so. You know, I think there's, the school year is going to start and yes, COVID's. Up front in everybody's mind, but I think that, you know, before you know it, it's, we're going to be rolling through whether this is the new normal or not. And there's still so many things that pertain. To transportation prior to this all starting, so I don't really want the whole, I mean, I, I guess it's my opinion. That I don't think the whole conference should be COVID focused.
Agreed. And, no, I agree with that, and this schedule the way, so that we would need three different accounts to host meetings. The way it's set up, because we have the three meetings from like 10:45 to 11:30, we would need three different accounts, so one account to host each one of those meetings. So my account could do one of them. We would see.
What dates are these?
We haven't decided on any of those yet.
Yeah.
So.
We're, we're looking at the week of, of the, you know, what, when conference was going to be, so, you know, that way, everybody kind of had it pinned on their calendars already. I think like, you know, a Tuesday, Wednesday would be. Nice if we could, you know, pull it off. That way we're not coming right out of the weekend and doing something that gives us an extra workday to. Just kind of dot our i's and cross our t's. But, you know. We haven't slated anything.
So. I can only, I can. Ensure that you are welcome to use my transportation Zoom account. But the only way I can commit the trust account is to know dates and, and running into the library of, of staff who. Has already pre-scheduled to use the account. I can't commit to that until I have a date. But I can give you, I can give you my transportation one for sure.
And what kind of limitations, I mean, as far as numbers go?
Um, our accounts are set up for 500. Do you need more than 500?
I mean, I, we don't really know. I, I don't think so, but, I mean, you said your highest number at the most was how many?
1,004, but for the month of April, we bumped it up to 1,000. So they ran in the eight, nine hundreds for the most part, and one day it was 1,004.
Yeah, I don't.
A good point, because, you know, we generally have what, 250 to 300 show up for the. For the actual show, but now that it's going to be a virtual, you might have, I mean, who knows what the number could be, right?
Yeah. Again, I don't, I don't know what my personal account is. I think it's only 100 because I'm cheap and I only bought the cheap account for me. So.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, we're, we are exploring to do our own, you know, to, for TAA to purchase its own Zoom. Platform or soon Zoom account, so that way we can. Really push this model forward, I think, a little bit more than what we've, you know, done in the past, and I think that there's opportunities to grow. Both for the region meetings and how we reach to our members, so it's really just, you know, I, I know that in the trust first couple of trainings that they put out there. Those numbers were down around, you know, two, couple hundred or something, and, you know, people that didn't sign up or get into the class. 10 minutes prior, didn't have a chance to get into it because.
Yeah, we just had 500. We didn't know, we didn't know that people would utilize it. It was.
I think, you know, it, it's hard to say, just. I mean, we're doing something. I don't want to speculate that, you know, go pay for 1,000 and then we only get like 200 people to do it, but. You know, I don't know. So, I think that. We were kind of, you know, trying to figure out, is there a way that we could reach out to maybe our vendors? Our platinum vendors and see if you guys might, you know, in some sort of sponsoring sponsorship. For the conference, could we do some, something where you guys made like a donation to the trust in terms of. You know, an opportunity to be a part of the conference and we do some advertising or, you know, getting your logos up there and other verbiage. That maybe we could get that donation to help us pay for a Zoom account in order, you know, for the next year that we could. You know, see what this looks like. Would that, you think that'd be something, Tom, that you and? The other two or three companies that are currently our platinum sponsors would be willing to, to do. I don't know what the dollar figure looks like, but.
Yeah, once you do, let me know and I'll certainly communicate it to them and get some feedback and then answer, but I'm sure everybody would probably be willing to help. And then as far as a Zoom account too, I, if we have one, I, I haven't utilized it, but if we do have one and we can share it. Just like Stephanie, I'm, I'm sure would be willing to do that, so let me look into that.
Okay, yeah, and we, we could always do, you know, this meeting sponsored by, you know, one of the big three or by all three of them, you know. This meeting sponsored by Kansas State RWC Auto Safety House. This one's sponsored by RWC International. Anything like that to help promote it also, because you guys are losing out on a lot of stuff also that I was having the conference as well.
Well, and you know, a super easy way to do that would be. To have, if you're, if someone isn't going to be speaking with a PowerPoint presentation, you can still create those slides for each meeting room that you have. That says, so when someone logs into a class, what they're seeing is a screen that says. Brought to you by or sponsored by or, that's such an easy 30 second creation of a PowerPoint one slide, you know.
Well, Steph, you and I are going to do one together with the virtual background on a beach in our superhero outfit, so it's okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
Can I wear my Seahawk stuff?
No, you're going to wear your worst case superhero, worst case scenario superhero outfit.
You know, it would be, you know, it would be cool. I'm just thinking as you guys are talking, I mean, certainly, I'm sure that the vendors will. Contributed something and, and like, I know you were talking earlier about some sort of 15 minutes or so to, to talk about what's new, but. You were talking about like a 15 minute break in between. I wonder if you can almost create like a 15 minute like little, you know, vendor commercial, like in other words, while you're getting the meeting set up, a particular vendor could just be running a. A video or something. I, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud where it's just not downtime, there's some sort of something going on, you know.
Where would that come?
Presentation, but.
Well, and we could do something like that also, but remember, Jason, with our YouTube channel, we wouldn't have to have. We could live stream classes right to the YouTube channel where people don't have to log into this.
You're only going to be able to livestream one video at a time.
Correct, but, you know, for that one class, you know, one class we could always do on the livestream, so we don't have to worry about if there's only 100 or, or 500 or whatever.
Yeah, and we could do, I think we could do that, just making whatever the main account's going to be and just so that there's one continuous stream. It would go from Tommy and Megan and then maybe. Let's Talk Support Staff or the Let's Talk Administrators if you wanted, then go to maybe the DSC and maybe. The youth mental health and then the CBD oils and drug screening or something like that, so that way. That's the one, those are the five class or four classes that are, that are streaming to the YouTube channel and then in between there. You know, as the class closes, then, you know, somebody just clicks a, you know, a commercial or something that. Would be playing for that, you know, kind of a looped 10 minutes, something while the next class is getting ready to get set up. That might be something that we could try and, try and come up with. I mean, we've got, I think we've, we're definitely losing time, but we've got a little bit of time to try and. Test sample and test run some of these things to make sure that we work out the bugs before, and I, I think. You know, there's so much unknown here, and I think that if we just had fun with it, right, and not be so serious about. If the product falls flat on its face, it falls flat on its face, right? We, at least we tried. I, I'm confident that we'll figure it out as we've all been using this technology for the last three months. That we're getting the hang of it, and so finding those little details here and there that will make it even better, will just benefit us. Better, so.
Correct.
You know, I think that we can definitely work those details out. I think the big things are, like I said, just. What is, I don't remember what the, what the cost of the Zoom account that you were looking at was, Tommy.
I'll have to go back and look at them. I know the one that I have personally is $15 a month.
But wasn't the other one like upwards of a thousand bucks?
It could be up towards a thousand dollars, yeah, if we had, depending on the number of users. We had, one of them's, I think, $99 a month. Per user, so if we had 10 users, it would be a thousand dollars or, you know, what our annual cost would be, but yeah. But if we had a TAA one, we could only, we don't have to have multiple, because we have one user that has a, a login that anyone on the board could use. To, to do a class, like our region meetings, you know. A region forum meeting, we give them the login, they go in and they create it, you know, and they could do the class, so. Yeah. I'll have to go back and look through prices again.
If we're going to do pre-registration, then we'll know ahead of time if the 100. Capacity product is, yeah, is enough, and then we can always upgrade, you know, a few days ahead of time, I would think. Higley has the 100. Similar to yours.
Well, and if we do get more than 100, you know, okay, Steph's, the, the, Stephanie's one, yours is 500, Stephanie, or is that the trust one that's 500?
Both.
Okay, so we have the one that's 500. We have another one that's, you know, gaining over 100 people. That could be the class that we. But we don't have the more than 100 people, we could livestream onto YouTube. You know, so we have those in and then go over to YouTube and.
Stephanie's could be used for the, the main sessions and one of the most popular classes will be, and then use the others for the small ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do you guys have a plan for purchasing an account? Or are you still talking about whether you should or not?
I think we want to. I think what our struggle is right now is. With the available funds that we have, if we, I think the, the number was right around $3,000 for us for the year. For a Zoom account.
Yeah.
For the, for, for TAA, and if we end up doing that. That we only had, that basically takes up half of what we have in our savings, you know, to get us through for next year and then. You know, obviously the starter from there, so we're, I guess. That's kind of the, the balance, right, is seeing if anybody is willing to, you know, does anybody want to prepay for next year and see if we can. You know, generate some revenue. To kind of, kind of pay Peter or Rob, Peter pay Paul. Versus doing, you know, do we just bite the bullet, see what it looks like, and then. You know, we just kind of roll the dice. I mean, in the past, it's always been, we've, we've really just run kind of light on funds and we've, you know, kind of always relied on. Our platinum vendors to pay their early bird registrations in January, and, you know, we've been trying to do a lot of work to get the trust to be able to stand on their own feet, so. I think that's kind of where we're at in the struggle of. Do we do this now just with the funds that we have versus we were hoping. That coming out of this summer conference, we would have been able to make those purchases for the upcoming, you know, the upcoming next fiscal year. So we could, you know. Have some generated fund revenue that came out of the conference from this year.
Yeah, and, and from the treasurer's standpoint, the other lingering piece that I still have back here worried about is we haven't gotten a response back from IRS yet. So. We did get the bill for the tax. We got the bill for the tax service for last year finally, but it's still sitting back here on, are we going to be forgiven on that? Those penalties and everything.
I would like to think so, but, you know, who knows?
So, I mean.
I've been out of town for a week, but I'll check the mailbox on Monday and let you know if there's anything in there.
You would think you'd just be able to send email, you know.
You would think. It's IRS, though. They can't even get the. Stimulus money out to people in time, so, yeah.
So I, I want to, I want to, I want to ask a couple of things or talk about a couple of things, because. The trust is nonprofit, so even though I understand that we are seen as a vendor. It's a nonprofit entity that is responsible to a board, so for transparency reasons, I. Can't just write a check for, hey, somebody wants a Zoom account. Hey, you know, that, that's not forwarding an educational agenda. And I feel the heavy responsibility of making sure that anybody who comes after me at the trust. Feels the same stewardship that I do towards the state and furthering educational agenda, just like what your entity is wanting to do. So in, in that vein, having talked to my boss and he was talking to attorneys on what we can do. One of our limitations is we, we can't become a platinum vendor or whatever you call it. I can't give you whatever that amount is. Because that doesn't further any agenda that, that we're all after, which is, you know, educating the state with transportation relevant issues. I, I wish and I can't, I can't do this. I, I wish, and I can't, I can't do this, but I wish that you had an alternative vendor option for somebody like of the trust that's educational based. That's, um, if, if I was to take it to my board, I could say, hey, this is an educational, um, vendor partnership. This is what comes with it. This is what loosely this, this entity would use the money for. You know, if in lieu of have, of having to ask for, hey, we'd like this speaker, would you pay for it? If there was a, an educational piece to your vendor, your, a, a piece that we fit in or other entities like us would fit in, uh, that would be something that then it's a given each year. It's something my board would be interested in. It would ensure that anybody who comes after me would see the benefit of that as well.
So could we create, we have the vendors, you know, or the vendors, but could we create what's also called educational partnerships? Does that make sense? Like, so then you're not a vendor, you're an educational partner for TAA.
Who are you asking?
You.
I, I don't know. I'm not, I am not educated about the process and, and, you know, board management and setup and, and things like that. It would seem to me in today's, with today's issues and today's environment, that at least there are folks like me, I, there are other entities out there looking for something like that. If we don't fit in your vendor category and I'm limited by what I can, how I can write a check or how I can give you money. Then, and you need it, then find a way to, to make that happen. Because I want to say to you, well, I'll tell you what, I'll pay for Debbie and Coral and me to attend next year's conference, whatever next year's conference turns out to be. So you have that money now. I could do that. But then I have to say, okay, well, I, I want to pay you for a speaker. You know, last year it was $5,000. I'll give you that too, but come up with something that makes it so that it's educational based and it meets everybody's needs. Because we don't fit into the vendor, vendor category.
Well, and, and that's why I'm saying maybe as a board, we need to create two separate entities there where there's the vendors and then there's the educational partnerships.
And we've talked about that in the past about, you know, seeing about the insurance, whether it's the insurance company, in, in the past, it's been the insurance companies. You know, and offering a rotational seat, whether it's to, you know, the trust, then Valley Schools, and then Mahoney Group, or whoever else is insuring Arizona State Schools. I think we know that, you know, a couple of them don't offer the same services that the trust is currently offering. So, um, I like the idea of, you know, an educational partner or something like that, that maybe is a, a seat on the board that, you know, I, I, I think there's a lot of conversations that we just want to have during that retreat time. If we can all agree to, um, you know, mid-June coming together for that retreat, that we can really comb through the bylaws of, you know, this, this organization's been around, what? 35, almost 40 years now. And so, you know, there's, I think there's some things that could definitely afford to change now in the 21st century that really mold and mesh a little bit better with what this organization is growing. So I think we just need to decide what that is, what does that look like? And how does, you know, how do we get that to be offered up to anybody, right? I mean, I, I don't want to say that, uh, what is it, PTSI, whoever that training group is? If they reached out and said, hey, we want to be an educational partner for the year and we'll pay this, would we say no to them? I mean, you know, they have their own agenda, but if they're willing to give us money, uh,
Right.
Their money.
Yeah. And, and that may be something of the retreat we have to talk about is what's defined vendor and what's defined educational partnership.
Partner. Yes.
Because, you know, our big three Platinums that are usually in, you know, RWC, Canyon State, Auto Safety House, they do a lot of training also that's education involved for like, especially our fleet guys.
Right.
Would they fall into educational partnership instead of vendors anymore? Are the vendors the one that, you know, do the, the stuff at our vendor show where educational partners are still part of that? But it's a showcase for them and not so much a vendor show for them. Does that make sense?
So could it be something where it is more of a, like that's the next tier above the Platinum membership is?
An educational partner.
Partnership, yeah.
Or something like that, that's the next step. And it gives you kind of that encompassing, you are doing training, you're doing all these other things that support the industry. But it also gives you that opportunity in the vendor show. So, you know, you're there promoting what you do as a company for school transportation and kind of what you, you know, what they have to sell versus somebody just coming in like, you know, I'll just use MDT. They come up for the day and.
No, I agree. And, and I think it's something that, um, it's not something they just buy into. I think it's something that, um, there's like an application process, you know? What kind of education partnership are they going to create?
And expectations.
Correct.
I agree. Yeah. What are they going to offer also throughout the year? What, you know, what does their content look like? Do they have a plan, et cetera? You know, almost very similar to, you know, what we require of our region reps, right?
Sure. What, what is your mission? Does it meet your, you know, think really big, thinking, okay, if we're going to have this, yes, it benefits everybody because we get money, you, you get money. And then whoever chooses to do that gets an agenda of, okay, well, I want to teach. But what do you need from them? What benefits your entity the most by creating something like this? And ask for the moon and see if anybody bites or if anybody can work within those constraints. Think of, think of big.
And it's another, it's another platform for the, the three bus dealers because they do their training classes all the time. We get the emails, they have this, like, Tom, didn't you guys just send out one? You guys have some coming up throughout the next couple of months of training classes.
Yeah, it's monthly, October for free. Yeah, just click on the link.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's another outlet for them again, you know, through TAA with that, that base also as the education partner too. So I think that's a good idea that we can discuss is creating that educational partnership and having that criteria and the expectations. And it's not something that's they buy into. It's like an application where they come to us, we talk about it. Here's where we're going to meet. Can you meet this? Then we're like, okay, I think you, this would be a great educational partnership for us. School bus safety company that just wants money from everyone else. Would that be a good educational partnership for TAA? Maybe not. You see what I mean?
Well, we're not buying into them. They're buying into us.
Correct. You're absolutely correct.
That's, that's the difference in that if, you know, we're happy to, to have you come be a part of the vendor show or whatever. But if you're going to, you know, we're not going to come and sponsor you and expect our people to buy your product because you're not doing the same to us, right? So, um, I think there's some way that we create that, what that program looks like. And then, um, you know, obviously it's probably going to, I would assume have to go out to a, a vote of the membership and probably need to have bylaws. You know, there's, there's a whole lot of work here that, that needs to kind of be done. And I think that it, we're just going to have to figure out what that timeline looks like and how to, how to push it. So.
So in the meantime, for your today's current, looking at 2020 conference, what, what can I do to help you? Do you need money for a speaker? Do you need to get your, to get your accounts going that you need to start this online stuff? I guess I'll need to know what, what you want, what, what you need.
Well.
Here's what I would, here's what I would suggest, Tommy. I think you, you probably got a commitment from vendors who were going to attend this year's show, right? So a list of whatever it was, 14, 16 vendors. If you can give me that list, I don't mind reaching out to them and say, listen, you know, the conference is canceled. We all saved X amount of dollars, right, by not attending the conference this year. So I'm sure somebody, you know, knowing that there'll be now a virtual, um, uh, virtual conference. Could you at least contribute a few dollars to help us get a Zoom account and pull this thing off for, for this year virtually?
And even, yeah, even if they wanted to like, you know, say for, what's a, a normal or bronze membership is like 800 bucks?
Yeah.
So if they kicked in, just say they kicked in 200 bucks and then gave us like a, a two minute video sample or something like that, that we could all piece like a whole commercial video together of everybody that was sponsoring it and just ran it through, you know, ran it through the, the day or the two days, however many.
So they get something for it and, you know, everybody contributes a little bit. Maybe together we can reach that $3,000 number or whatever the cost of the Zoom was. Gosh, that Zoom is expensive.
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's on the year, it's a yearly, you know, when you're looking at that broken down by a month. But to have all the added features beyond just, you know, kind of the educational platform that all the schools have been using, um, you know, it definitely is, gets up there.
Well, I wouldn't mind doing that if you have, I mean, obviously I've got the bus contacts, but for everybody else, you know, just give me a list of who did plan on coming. I'll reach out to them this week and try to get committed.
Okay. We can do that. So Stephanie, to answer your question, I think that's what we're going to need to figure out at our retreat that we're doing. Of what are our needs right now? And then, um, compiling that list together. Jason, does that sound about right or?
Well, we decided. Going to be after the conference. So.
Yeah.
I guess the, the big question, the, the big question is, A, we already know that we want to do a virtual conference, right? And we're going to vote on that on June 8th. But in the interim, I think we need, we want to kind of have in the background what all the details are that we're going to need, that the cost expenditures to do that. So if we're talking about, you know, is it, if it's $3,000 that we need to get the Zoom account up, if Tom's able to come in with, um, you know, some, some of our vendors. And I would imagine a lot of those vendors have probably lost a lot of money. So they may not be able to financially be able to afford, you know, doing that because of their closures. So, um, you know, we saw Desert Breeze the other day, I just got an email from Desert Breeze about, you know, things not going well over there. So, um, I think.
They're, they're closing down June 30th is their last day.
So, you know, there's how many, how many other companies are going to be affected by this? And so I don't, I, I, I mean, yes, we're, we're obviously not bringing in revenues either. So, um, I'd be certainly open that if, you know, the trust was willing to, if we could ask to pay for their sponsorship of Dave Rendall or, um, I forgot the other lady's name.
Jessie.
Yes, Jessie Funk, you know, either one, if you guys wanted to see their material, which one that they, you know, which one better aligned with the content that maybe you were putting out there? And, you know, pick one that you guys wanted to sponsor to pay for. That would certainly be a help, right? That way we could just, um, go ahead and utilize those funds now. I mean, it's really just kind of fast forwarding into the year. We're not doing anything that, I don't know. I mean, is that something that sounds like we could formally request to you, Stephanie, via email?
Sure. Uh, let me, let me see. Really what, what will work is if you just title an invoice to me, um, conference educational resource material, something like that.
Perfect.
Easy.
Nice.
And then, and then Tommy, if you will bill me for next year's conference for Coral, uh, Debbie and Stephanie, I don't have a problem doing that now. And then next year it'll just be done with.
Okay. Yeah. I'll just, I'll create the new invoices. I'll create the new invoices for next, uh, uh, conference year already. And then that way it's logged with that conference year. That would be fine. Now, does this count as early registration price? I'm just asking. I'm just kidding.
Yes.
Whatever you need to do.
Yeah. That's the case, Stephanie. You don't want to know the price of conference. I'm just saying.
I think there's still value in trying to, you know, because we, we don't want to not give our vendors that already signed up an opportunity to be a part of this. I think that those that look for, you know, I'm just thinking of Craig Riordan from REI. You know, he's, he's very supportive of our conference and had lots of positive things to say about, you know, how well our show is in compared to other states. So, you know, they may be willing and I want to give them all an opportunity to be a part of it. Um, and not just have it rest on our shoulders. So there might be things that, uh, Tom might be able to figure out with those that do want to be a part of it. If they want to, you know, any, I think at this rate, any donation possibly, you know, that they'd be willing to, to, to kick in. I don't see any dollar amount being, if they want to say, you know, if you just said, hey, you guys willing to make a donation to TAA for the virtual conference this year? And if they want to write us a check for X amount of dollars, great, you know?
A hundred bucks.
We've taken it, you know, taken it too hard, um, you know, in our closure ourselves and we just can't afford it, no big deal. So.
I'll just present as do what you can, you know, knowing that, you know, everybody's business is probably down, but whatever contribution would be helpful.
Yeah. And, and we could work it if they need an invoice to do it in, you know, if they contact me with, with an amount that they'd be willing, I could create that invoice for them. So, you know, it looked like a full invoice for them. Yeah.
Perfect.
So just to wrap up the conference side of things, do we, do we, do we want to explore just a one day? Or do we think that a two, like a, a one and a half day where we do like class content on the, on the first day? And maybe event, you know, as much as we can with the vendors on the second day?
I, I would say right now, let's, let's plan for a two day with the vendors and then see, wait to see how many vendors are willing to do it. And if we don't have enough to do, you know, a half day on that second day, we can pull it back to the one day and do whatever, how many vendors there are, put a time in for it. I, I think that's a, a compromised idea.
Yeah. Cause we have right now slated 8:30 to start, you know, we're all bus drivers. Could we start earlier? But I'm just thinking, you know, when you start going, or do we really need to have an hour for lunch? Can we, you know, we could probably tighten that timeframe up to 30 minutes and everybody goes to the creator and gets their food and comes back and sits down and eat.
I thought you had that at 30.
No, I have.
Oh, you did have an hour.
I have lunch for an hour.
Correct.
Well, and then we also know that, you know, this is going to be a good training opportunity because they're going to pull, you know, six, seven, eight, nine people in to sit in and watch on these classes also. So.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I think that would be, that would be fine with a 30 minute because they could all sit together and eat and then we can start up again.
See, that's what I was thinking in having more than just one person because then conversations are huge. I mean, I would, I would hate to think that only one person is sitting in front of this and not inviting fellow bus drivers or trainers or whom else could benefit from this to have those open discussions and what's going on in the, on the screen.
Yep.
Especially when you cover the topic of CBD oil. I would hope that there would be more than one driver just sitting there saying, oh, wow, I didn't know that. So I know, huh? Stephanie's got that grin on her face.
I'm going to have to sign off for another 11 o'clock meeting I have for my district here in a few minutes, just so you know.
Yes. So real quick, just to kind of bring up the topic, cause I know that, um, I don't really know that I feel, I haven't fielded any questions on this. But along the lines of voting and, um, you know, the extension of, um, positions for another year, what, you know, what are everybody's thoughts on that? And what are we, what should we do as far as, I guess, tabling that for a year? Or should, do we need to explore some sort of virtual voting option?
Well, with, with the Zoom account that we have, we can do polling. We can also create the, the Google Doc of, uh, voting options in there where it requires them to have a, an email address. So we can then verify, you know, the membership or, I mean, are we, are we just extending memberships and anyone that comes, we can, I, I don't know. I don't know an answer to that.
Well, so, so one of the things that says is to be a voted, to be allowed to vote, you have to be an active member. So just if they're logged into a Zoom account, doesn't mean that they're active unless we waive the fees for a year or extended whatever they paid last year was good for 24 months or something like that.
Correct.
But I think it would be hard to do like nominations and speeches through Zoom, just in my opinion, but.
I agree. Um, I just, you know, I think we just need to figure out, um, what that language is going to be. You know, and so how we're going to word it back to the members that, and, and, you know, I think we'll put out an email and communication for the June 8th meeting to say, these are, you know, this is kind of the way we're leaning. We are willing to take comments from, um, our members. You know, if you feel strongly one way or the other, and then we can, you know, just vote on it, on what we're going to do as of the.
Did you do a, a poll on the Facebook page when you announced the, the upcoming meeting? That just kind of get their general feedback?
Yeah, I can. Not done. Yes, but I can.
I mean, I, I can only think of maybe a, a couple or a handful of people that might object to it. But I think the majority would understand that.
We can always do Survey Monkey also. Jason, I think you have a Survey Monkey account. And I have a Survey Monkey account that, that's. And I have a Survey Monkey account that, that's paid for also. So, I mean, we can, we can always send it out through that as well.
My opinion is it would make more sense for the organization to keep the same board through this rough time and because we know the direction of, I guess, everything that's occurred so far and also gives those people a chance to fulfill their term either as president or whatever. So.
And I think.
Agreed.
Transparency purposes of not trying to, you know, it's just.
But does that mean Mike can't retire for yet another year or how's that?
Correct. That's correct. But, but just the, uh, opinion of the president is with the current board that we have, the situation of COVID within the school districts, I think, um, that the, I, I would, I would feel that most people would agree that to keep moving forward with the board in place, just as, it, just it's moving forward from 2020 to 2021. And then we'll get the platform when we're back at conference and we have active membership at the conference and people can, uh, do speeches and, and network who they are and what they are. Cause I also feel backing up to that, that people are so busy just trying to keep their districts afloat and employees going through the COVID situation that they're not looking actively to, to fight to be on the board. I, I'm hoping the majority is, and you just said that, all of you did, that the board in place, everybody's happy with that. So I think just what, what Josh just said and Jason and Tommy, everybody, I think that's totally agreed. Let's just move forward with who we have, where we have them.
Just an extension of everyone that's in their current positions through the 2021 conference.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm from a non-voting position. I think everybody would understand, you know, given the current conditions, makes, makes more sense.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. Well, I'm going to go ahead and sign off for my other meeting, but, um, let me know. Thank you.
Glad to see you.
Unfortunately I have to leave as well. Is there anything else you need from me from a vendor standpoint?
No, I think we're going to just go ahead and wrap it up. Um, we will, our next meeting is going to be the eighth. That will be an actual board meeting where we'll be voting on, um, the things that we talked about today. I think we'll just really need to plan. I'll, we'll have an agenda together that we'll get out in, in before, um, the eighth, so that way you guys can see and see if we need to add or subtract anything. But really, really just voting on the eighth to get the virtual conference going and then go ahead and, kind of start planning from there. And, you know, we're going to need to really ramp it up pretty quick on who, what content we're going to have and who's going to be our speakers and who's going to be our meeting hosts. So, um, we'll just kind of go from there. So.
Okay. That, that works perfect.
Alrighty.
Nice.
Hey, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, everybody.